Welcome everyone to tonight's meeting of the Burlington City Council on today, April 3rd, 2018. We appreciate everyone accommodating our back-to-back meeting schedule tonight. I'd like to take a moment to ask everyone to please silence all electronic devices. It's my honor to give tonight's invocation. We are thankful for this day that has been given to us, for its opportunities and its challenges. We ask for strength, insight, wisdom, and guidance as we forge ahead, keeping in mind always the enduring values of life, exerting our efforts in those areas and on those things upon which future generations can build with confidence. Amen. We have a special recognition this evening. At this time, I would like to call forward Tim Jeffers. Would you like to tell us a little about day of service? No? You got it all out of community council?
Yes.
I guess we were honored to do this proclamation at the community council meeting this morning, morning, lunchtime. So, and... This is how many years have we been up?
This is the sixth annual national recognition for community service. And all across the nation, mayors and local and city officials are issuing either proclamation or are participating in recognition events to thank volunteers all across the nation for their service. And we appreciate yourself and all the officials that signed up on the national registry as part of the National Recognition Day.
Over 52,000 different communities have signed up to support this initiative. So, I'm not going to hold. We'll officially proclaim it. My honor on behalf of the City Council of Burlington to proclaim April 3rd, 2018 as National Service Recognition Day, where a service to others is a hallmark of the American character, essential to how we meet our challenges. And whereas the nation's mayors are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet their needs. And whereas AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants address the most pressing challenges facing our communities. From educating students for the jobs of the 23rd century, to fighting the opioid epidemic, to responding to natural disasters, to supporting veterans and military families. And whereas national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership opportunities for those who serve. And whereas AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants serve in more than 50,000 locations across the country, bolstering the civic, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well-being. And whereas national service participants increase the impact of the organizations they serve, both through their direct service and by managing millions of additional volunteers. And whereas national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return of taxpayer dollars. And whereas national service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. And whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with local leaders nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with the National League of Cities, the National Association of Counties, cities of service, and local leaders across the country for National Service Recognition Day on April 3rd, 2018. Therefore, be of resolve that I, Ian Baltous, Mayor of the City of Burlington, do hereby proclaim April 3rd, 2018 as National Service Recognition Day, and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our country to those who serve and to thank those who serve and to find ways to give back to their communities. Thank you for all your work. And thank you to all those who serve. At this time, we recognize our city clerk.
Counsel, it's my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask of there any potential conflicts concerning to my agenda.
Before counsel, a minute from the March 5th, 2018 work session and the March 20th City Council meeting. Do I hear a motion and second to approve those minutes?
I move.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Minutes have been approved. For counsel is the agenda. Do I hear a motion and second to adopt the agenda?
Make motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor of adopting the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Agenda has been adopted. Next is our consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions, please let us know. Item A, to adopt an ordinance approving the following Traffic Commission recommendations. Those are spelled out in your agenda. Item B, to award a fiscal year 2017-2018 annual audit contract in the amount of $56,000 with Stout, Stewart, McGowan &amp; King, LLP, and to authorize the mayor and finance director to execute the contracts. Item C, to approve an abandonment of easement and grant a new date of easement from the City of Burlington to the town of Green Level to reflect the actual location of the Green Level Sanitary Sewer Force Main across Burlington's property. Do I hear a motion and second to approve the consent agenda?
So, move.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Consent agenda has been approved. We have one public hearing this evening. Item 1, a public hearing has been set for citizens to comment on the 2018-2019 Community Development Program One-Year Action Plan. At this time, counsel recognizes community development administrator Sonia Randolph.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. At the March 20th City Council meeting, council set a date of public hearing to receive citizen comments on the 2018-2019 Annual Action Plan for CDBG and the Annual Action Plan for the Home Funds we received from the consortium led by the City of Greensboro. This public hearing was advertised in the Burlington Times News on March 22nd, 2018. Today is also the beginning of our 30-day public comment period on the annual action plans. On March 24th, the 30-day comment period was publicized in the Burlington Times News. To date, staff has not received any written or oral comments on the plans. The comment period will end May 3rd, 2018. Tonight, we will receive citizen comments on the annual action plan that is on display in the Planning and Community Development Department, and also on the annual action plan budget that was advertised in the Burlington Times News. In your package, you did receive a summary of the proposed activities for the action plans and the advertised budget. I also have a map of the locations for this year's proposed, the proposed grant subrecipients, so that you all can see where the different locations of the city, where we are proposing projects for this year. As you can see, that all of the projects are kind of dispersed out throughout the entire city. And I also did want to note that the start here for the Exchange Club Family Center, it does have the specific location, but their target area is the East Burlington area. I would also like to note that HUD has not released the CDBG and the home fund allocation for any municipality yet. So, the allocations that you do see in the advertised budgets are estimates based on last year's allocation amounts. Once we do receive the grant allocations from HUD, then we will go back and revise the allocation amount with the final allocation amount that we received from HUD. And then I will come back before you all to have you all approve the final budget amounts and the final approved, final annual action plan. Tonight, we also do have several of the proposed grant or subrecipients that would like to also speak during the public hearing. Thank you, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer any of your questions at this time.
Any questions from counsel? Thank you.
I did have one for you, Sonia. It mentioned the facade program on Maple Avenue, which seems a little unusual, but it also mentioned that it needs to be in a residential area?
Correct. So, the CDBG funds must be spent in a primarily residential area, that is by statute. So, neighborhood businesses do count. So, even if the area, there is a business in the area, but if it is primarily residential, such as a lot of the portions, sorry, I'm pointing with my finger, but a lot of the portions in the Maple Avenue corridor area are actually residential and not something like our central business district, like downtown area.
Any other counsel questions? This is a public hearing. If anyone on this side of the room would like to speak. You could please state your name, organization, and address.
Yes, sir. Kep Taylor Construction Training Partnership, tri-party agreement between the Home Builders Association, City of Burlington, and the NC Housing Finance Agency. And we do construction training, try to impact affordable housing as well by working with Ms. Randolph and some of her projects. We've helped around town also with Habitat some, and with Parks and Rec. And it's a good program. We spread goodwill, train people. We also are on the agenda for the NCHFA matching money, and that item's been prepared, and we'd like to continue with the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on this side of the room who would like to speak?
Welcome. Jay Baker with Allied Churches of Alamance County, 206 North Fisher Street. One of the things we wanted to talk about was the Empowerment Center at Allied Churches, where we're using the nationally accredited coordinated assessment model to link individuals with community resources that are needed within a very high rate. What we're looking at is actually being able to assess an individual, be able to refer them to those resources, and hopefully move them from homelessness to a permanent stable place, or prevent them from being homeless. So, of course, that also includes some utility and rental assistance that we provide there at the shelter. We appreciate everything that the city has done for us, and we continue to rely on the city and the partnerships that we have established to continue that process as we move forward to end homelessness and fight hunger in Alamance County.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side of the room?
I'm Latonya Penny from Family Abuse Services of Alamance County at 1950 Martin Street, located in the Family Justice Center. Family Abuse Services is requesting funds for Our Sister's House. We started our 2015 renovations, and you all were able to help us at that time to redo our bathrooms for our recipients who stayed there with us. We're looking to create a resource room so that families who find themselves in domestic violence situations can start again, applying for jobs. And along with the resource room, we want to be able to accommodate the staff that have to be there 24 hours a day and update their living quarters because they're really, really outdated. We do thank you for all the things that you've done for us to help with domestic violence, and we're hoping that you'll be able to assist us even more.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side of the room?
Good evening. I'm Annette Orbit, Executive Director at Alamance County Community Services Agency Incorporated. I know that's long. So, I will refer to it as ACCSA. You've helped us over the years, we partnered with the City of Burlington, to build homes in Apple Tree Village, which is located on Apple Street. It's a subdivision, it had 18 lots, and we're down to three lots that we're trying to get. We're at the wire now, we're trying to get that done. Along with Habitat, they have helped us build those homes in that area. So, we're requesting funds that would be used to continue the development at Apple Tree Village subdivision located on northern Burlington and Census Track 204. And the remaining three lots, which are a quarter of acre lots, are located on Hampton Court and Apple Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side of the room?
Hello, I'm Ron Osborne. I'm the Executive Director of Residential Treatment Services. The address there is 136 Hall Avenue, 1608 South Meben Street are the two facilities where we have asked for some monies to be able to help improve a building at Hall Avenue, do some renovations there that need to be done, and then also to provide some case management services for homeless women in recovery. This council has been very generous over the years, and the 20 years that I've been director there, y'all have taken on a number of projects that have helped a great deal. And these monies are instrumental in being able to keep programs like ours afloat. We and our Detox Crisis Unit plan on using some of this monies to be able to put in a glass door in between the nurses' station and the day room where activity can be seen, and also to set up a spot right outside of that door with a recliner for people that are in shape, where they really need to be watched more than being actually in their room. Be able to also use some of those monies to be able to set up a call system for, where nurses can be contacted by people that are in their room in the crisis room or detox room. Even though those nurses do hourly checks and around to those rooms, sometimes they find that some of those people really need to be able to have easier contact. Would also replace some outside doors and do some lighting in that building. So, we appreciate everything y'all do, and hope that we'll be able to continue to be partners this year, too.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, downstairs, we're short. Thank you. My name is Sarah Black. I'm actually the Executive Director of the Exchange Club's Family Center in Alamance. That's a mouthful. And our primary mission is the prevention and treatment of child abuse and neglect. So, let me explain why we even applied for your help. And the reason why is because we're finding out more and more with modern research that the roots of most of our societal problems, poverty, substance abuse, domestic violence, things like that, have their hands in early childhood trauma. Because what we know about, research has told us, is that basically, when that happens, it physically changes the architecture of our brains. And so, what we do in our passion at the Exchange Club Family Center in Alamance is helping to prevent that. And that's basically what we've wanted to partner with you on, in working with families, particularly from East Burlington, to make sure that we can not only provide them with help and support and parenting, but also to help address some of those connections and life issues. So, this is the first time we've knocked on your door, so we hope that you can help us in the future, as well as now, to be able to kind of ultimately get that goal in place. Because when we can do a little bit of dollars towards prevention, we can save a whole bunch of money on the back end. So, just thank you again, and we're excited to be here and kind of work with you for the first time, potentially. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome to the program. Anyone else on this side of the room? Anyone on this side of the room who would like to speak?
I'm M.J. Wilkerson. I am the Director of Alamance County Public Libraries, and I have five addresses for our branches, but we'll go with the one on Sharp Road, since that's the one that's pertinent to this conversation, which is at Mako Bigelow Community Center. In the past, you have graciously given us part of this funding to purchase materials for our libraries, and we have a wonderful woman in place there who's managing that branch. And since she's been in place, just over this past year, we have seen the number of people entering the library increase by 8.3 percent. We have seen the number of programs that we've offered increase by 38 percent, and the number of people attending those programs has increased 43 percent. So, we're real excited about the great things that she's doing and pulling people in, and the partnership that she has in working with the staff at the community center. And she's working very hard to become a vital part of that community and share what kind of services the library offers. And I know we're in the middle of renovations at North Park, and so we're excited about that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side of the room?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm Dorothy Yavara, and I'm speaking on behalf of Veronica Revos, who is the Executive Director of Burlington Housing Authority, and Nikki Ratliff, who actually manages the two programs that I'm going to talk about. I think around 2006, we were in jeopardy of losing some HUD funding, and the local management entity at that time approached the Housing Authority about taking over these programs. And the Housing Authority had to redesign and develop programs for homelessness, and it was for chronically homeless individuals. So, the Housing Authority has been doing that since 2006 with the assistance of the City Council. The programs are called the Hope and Step Program. Currently, to date, we have actually served more than 14 chronically homeless families and over 71 chronically homeless individuals. Now, when I say chronically homeless, we're using the definition that has been provided by HUD, because HUD is saying these individuals must have been homeless for more than three years. So, that means if they've been homeless for more than three years, they have a lot of issues. Not only are they homeless, but they also had to have maybe some mental issues and substance-related issues as well. So, therefore, we have to have caseworkers and other professionals coming in at all times, at least monthly, to work with these individuals. So, the program has been extremely successful with your support. We ask your continued support in the program. I spoke with Ms. Ratliff today to see if we were at full capacity. We did have one family to complete the program, however, today we also received several referrals. So, the programs are continuing to be successful. We rarely, if ever, have any vacancies, and we also work with them not only for housing, but for employment needs, their health needs, education, and mental health needs. And we serve two, we manage actually two of the six homeless programs here in Alamance County. Thank you so much.
Excellent. Thank you. Anyone else on this side of the room?
Hi, I'm Lisa Edwards from the City Gate Dream Center. And we probably five years ago began partnering with Andrews Elementary, and that first year doing things, coming alongside of them, doing things within the school. And that summer, we did a camp for the kids, 125 kids. We provided transportation for probably 80 of those kids, two meals, and just five days of a lot of fun. And we fell in love. And since then, we've tried to find a way to be able to be not just visiting that community, but a part of that community. So, three and a half years ago, we rented our first building at 2310 North Church Street, and we renovated that building and began holding programs weekly, monthly, all kinds of different things, mainly for the students and kids in that area. We also have a strong partnership with Lupe, and the Latino community there. And so, we've had an incredible time in that facility, but in January, we moved into a much larger facility. That's going to allow us to do things that we've only dreamed of up till now. We have in that building a nice room that'll hold about 250 people. We have a dance room that can be used for Zumba and fitness programs. We have a running track or walking track, whatever you prefer. And we have a large warehouse that we're converting. We hope to convert to an indoor soccer field and a sport court and a large cafe that would be just a really nice, beautiful place for that community to be able to gather. And so, that's what we are hoping to be able to use the funds for, to be able to hire instructors for Zumba and fitness and coaches, and also to be able to do the renovations, part of the renovations in the warehouse.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on this side of the room? Welcome.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Hilton. I'm with Ralph Scott Life Services. Our main office is located on 408 West Trade Street in Burlington. You know, in the past several years, we've worked with you guys on several building projects that we had, specifically our day program on Turntine Street. We have used a lot of our funds. We've also used block grant funds to upgrade the building, and some of the funds that we're requesting this year are a final flooring project. The building had had a lot of past water damage, and we replaced the roof, and with some grant funds, we were able to fix some of the interior problems and paint the building. And so, that would actually end that project. And as many of you know, we've been around since 1971, and we provided services to adults with intellectual and other developmental disabilities. And two of the group homes that we operate are in need of a new roof, and so some of those additional funds would be for the roofing projects for those two group homes. One is located on Lakeside Avenue. It's a ladies' group home, and the other is located on Broad Street, which is a men's group home. And both of those are houses that were originally purchased from the City of Burlington with similar grant funds. So, again, we are hopeful that we will be able to work with you guys and that those funds would be available for these projects. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side of the room? Do I hear a motion to close public hearing? I move. Second.
Mayor, may I just say one thing? I would just like to thank all of the organizations that did come here today, and also, they've been here since 3:00 today for our reception, and I don't know if everyone did have the chance to look at their pictures to see, to really put, I guess, a picture with what we actually fund. And so, they've been here since 3:00, talking to people, not just city staff, but even citizens that have come into Municipal Hall. But they were graciously to stay here from 3:00 to 6:00 and be here tonight, so I'm really thankful that they were able to do that and to be a part of the reception today.
Thank you for mentioning that. And we mentioned during our work session that Harold shared some of your stories about how we're putting these dollars to use with our federal delegation representatives up there. They're very appreciative of that. Putting a face to those funds, adding the story, and really talking about the community impact is so critical as we discuss the future of funding for these programs. So, thank you all for your participation in this long day that you've been in City Hall, but we appreciate your work every day for our community. So, I heard a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion to close public hearing? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Public hearing is closed. Thank you very much for attending. And again, thank you for your work. That concludes our agenda items. We did not, did we have any public comments? Okay, we had no public comments this evening. Do I hear any comments from City Council? I have a couple announcements I wanted to make. For those of you who have heard about our community improvement program, we've added a couple more meetings. Thank you to everyone who has attended those. There's another meeting tomorrow at 5:30 PM at Kernodle Senior Center, and then Thursday, April 12th at 6:00 PM at Almyra Community Center. Those are great opportunities to learn more about the community improvement program and what it's doing for our community. Spring cleaning continues. Bulk waste collection is free until April 27th. Did you have...
I have one thing I wanted to mention. I'd reached out to Harden and Bob Patterson about, we had the discussion about HB 436 and the water and sewer funding and that sort of thing. It dawned on me that we really don't have a long-term plan, sort of a strategy of what we're doing with our water and sewer infrastructure, and it is our largest asset that we have and probably the one that's the most sensitive. We hear that often when we go over the CAFR about how our long-term responsibilities there are pretty significant. So, I asked them about the thoughts of putting a plan together, comprehensive plan, sort of a strategy for that purpose. And with council's approval, I'd like to see that as a line item on the budget for the next coming fiscal year or two, go ahead and get that moving. And I think it would put us in a much better place for discussions around these types of topics when we move forward.
Excellent. Any question regarding that request? Thank you for including that. Couple of other quick announcements. For those of you with driver's licenses out there, North Carolina DMV is pushing the new Real ID program. If you don't have the little star on it, they're trying to sign up 4 million North Carolinians this year. There's great information available at ncrealid.gov or 919-715-7000. So, again, if you fly on an airplane, you're going to need to have that star on your ID starting very soon. So, more information's available.
And you can't do it online if you don't have that.
You can't do it online, so, yeah. You have to actually show up at the DMV, and you have to have some very specific documents. So, all that information is online. Better to get it done than get turned away at an airport. North Park Farmers Market kicked off today, and we had a beautiful day out there, well attended. Thank all our farmers who participated. That will continue every Tuesday at North Park at the beautiful shelter that was included in our North Park Improvement Plan from 3:00 to 6:00 PM on Tuesday evenings. Burlington is a maker city, so we've appreciated that designation for many years, and we're hosting our Maker Fair this year on April 28th at 10:00 PM over at Holly hosting our Maker Fair this year on April 28 at 10:00 PM over at Holly Hill Mall. That is the largest and longest-running Maker Fair in the state of North Carolina, and we are proud that it calls Burlington home. We encourage you to check it out, rain or shine. It's always a great venue. Construction has started on the animal shelter. If you haven't had a chance to swing by, they're busy getting that started, and as a result, we need some room back in there to allow for the construction crews. So we're doing an adoption special, $10 for cats and dogs, and we're looking for foster families as well to help clear up space as construction continues. The county commissioners have asked for feedback on their bonds, and they've opened up a community feedback session on April 16th at 7:00 PM at Southern High School for folks to voice their concerns and voice their support for that, that education bond initiative. And that includes both the ACC and the ABSS bonds. And then we have Active City Streets coming up on May 5th at 10:00 AM in downtown. And then related to active, healthy environments, we had our Health in All Policies Initiative the council adopted a, a couple months ago, and the Cone Health, Be Healthy Now Initiative has just released an amazing resource map of different healthy activities and sites around the community, and that's available at behealthyalamance.com. Wonderful resource to help folks stay engaged and active around our community. Lastly, I just wanted to mention that my wife and I will have the opportunity next week to visit our sister city in Soladad, Mexico. We'll be traveling at our own expense, but a great opportunity to continue to build the sister city's relationship. Any other questions or comments from council? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Thank you everyone for coming.